All electronic devices to vibrate. Will all non-council employees, non-council employees, please leave the main floor of the chambers? If you are seated upstairs in the balcony, there is no photography upstairs in the balcony. Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of November fourteenth, twenty nineteen. I am Public Advocate Jumani Williams.
Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Kimberly L. Deathridge, the pastor of Saint Mark AME Church located ninety... I am mistaken. We will first have roll call.
Adams.
Present.
Ampree Samuel. Ayala.
Present.
Barron.
Present.
Borelli. Brannon.
Here.
Cabrera. Chin.
Here.
Cohen.
I'm here.
Constantinides. Carnegie.
Here.
Deutsch. Diaz. Drum.
Here.
Espinal.
Here.
Eugene.
Present.
Gibson.
I'm here.
Jonai.
I'm present.
Gordenchik.
Here.
Holden.
Here.
Kalos.
Here.
Ku.
Present.
Kozlowitz.
Here.
Lanceman. Lander.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Mizell.
Here.
Menchaca.
Presente.
Miller.
Present.
Moya.
Present.
Perkins.
Present.
Powers.
Here.
Reynoso. Richards.
Aye. I mean, here.
Rivera.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rose.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Here.
Salamanca.
Present.
Torres. Traeger.
Here.
Ulrich. Vallone.
Here.
Van Bramer.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Mattio.
Here.
Combo.
Present.
Speaker Johnson.
Thank you. And now we'll have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Kimberly L. Deathridge, the pastor of Saint Mark AME Church located at ninety-five eighteen Northern Boulevard in Jackson Heights, Queens.
Let us pray. Dear most gracious and everlasting God, Creator and sustainer of the universe, giver of life, we come this afternoon to invoke your presence and to say thank you. First of all, Lord, thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Thank you for the members of the city council. Thank you for their servant leadership, their commitment and dedication to the work that you have called them to do and the good work that they have already accomplished. Thank you for the wonderful mosaic of people that live, work, play, and visit this great city called New York whom they serve. Bless the Speaker of the Council, the Honorable Corey Johnson, as he presides over this stated meeting. Bless all the members of the city council and bless my own councilman, the Honorable Francisco Moya of the Twenty-First Council District. Lord, you have entrusted this city into their hands. Give them wisdom, understanding, and patience in determining what is best for all New Yorkers. In these troubled times where powers and principalities seek to divide and oppress, continue to help them to understand and provide for the needs of our city, the vulnerable, the lost, the poor, the oppressed, and the issues that they deal with of affordable housing and criminal justice and educational reform and safety and security of our people, sex trafficking, mental health, and what it means to be neighbor. We are reminded in your word, Lord, to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. We are all each other's neighbors, and may they listen and hear the concerns of this city. May their decisions be tempered with justice and mercy as they serve all the constituents of New York City. Thank you for their vision. Thank you for their staff. Continue to give them the moral fortitude of what is right. Unify, encourage, uplift, strengthen, and restore them. Watch over them and their families. Bless them in all that they do to make New York a better city for us all. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I will now ask Councilmember... Now ask Councilmember Moya to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. I'd like to make a motion to spread the invocation in full upon the record. It's also a great honor to have and introduce Reverend Kimberly Deathridge, Esquire of the Saint Mark's African Methodist Episcopal Church, that has a rich and storied history, its leadership in faith and community, and its dedication to the civil rights movement, so that justice and human rights issues are something that I can think humbles us all. So it's no feat to make history in the AME Church, but it's exactly what Reverend Deathridge has done. In 2010, she became the church's first female pastor in its one-hundred-and-eighty-four-year history and has been a shining example of faith, love, and service every day since. Among her many titles and accolades, Reverend Deathridge is a president of the Corona East Elmhurst Clergy Association and a former chaplain of the NYPD Grandmothers Love Program, which helps grandmothers raising their children. Reverend Deathridge is also the first black female supervisor in the Legal Aid Society Criminal Defense Division in the Brooklyn office. There, she continues to work fighting for civil rights and workers' rights. She is a spiritual beacon, and I am so proud to have her here with us today to make the invocation. Thank you and God bless you, Reverend Deathridge, for being here.
Thank you, and I know Councilmember Adams wants to say something?
Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader. I had to add on to the invocation, which was so graciously done by my colleague, Councilmember Moya, because Reverend Deathridge happens to be the pastor of my home church, Saint Mark African Methodist Episcopal Church in Jackson Heights, where my dad, Irvin Eady, still is a member for forty years or so. So Reverend Kim, we're so blessed to have you today. Beautiful invocation. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you so much, and I just want to make sure that we understand we have an awesome Majority Leader. That's Lori Combo. So we'll have now the adoption of minutes?
None.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M-one ninety-four, excuse me.
I want to thank you, and at this time I'm asking for a roll call vote on today's land use call-up calendar. We're just voting on the land use call-ups right now.
Adams.
I vote aye.
Ampree Samuel.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Barron.
I vote aye.
Borelli. Brannon.
Aye.
Cabrera.
Aye.
Chin.
Aye.
Cohen.
I vote aye.
Constantinides.
I'd like to vote yes on all land use call-ups, and with your permission, I'd like to also vote yes on all couple of general orders and resolutions.
Permission granted.
Thank you.
Menchaca.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moya.
Aye.
Perkins.
Aye on all.
Powers.
Aye.
Reynoso.
Aye.
Richards.
Permission to explain my vote.
Permission granted.
Thank you. Oh, all these are call-ups. Oh, forget it. Oh, sorry. I vote aye. I'm having a fun day today.
Rivera.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rose.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Salamanca.
I vote aye on all land use call-ups, and with permission, I'd like to vote aye on all items on the general order calendar and all resolutions.
Permission granted.
Thank you.
Cohen.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Traeger.
Aye.
Ulrich. Vallone.
Aye.
Van Bramer.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Mattio. Combo.
Aye.
Speaker Johnson.
I vote aye, but I'd also like to say something before Councilmember Mizell leaves, which is I am very, 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 very happy that he's back. He is a good friend. He is a great member of this body, and he has been out, so I want to welcome back Alan Mizell. And with that, I vote aye on the land use call-up calendar.
Today's... Thank you, and peace and blessings to Councilmember Mizell. Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of forty-six in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We'll now have communication from Speaker Corey Johnson. Before that, I just want to say, Mr. Speaker, as of a few weeks ago, this is my first time back since the general election, and I want to tell the body and the city, unfortunately, it's stuck with me at least for the next two years.
Boy, do we know it. Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. I'm glad you're back. I'm glad you're here. Congratulations. Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for being here today on this important stated meeting. This morning, we had a very tragic news coming out of Southern California. There was yet another mass shooting, a high school shooting. One person was killed, more injured, two of them in critical condition, and it was a shooting at Sagas High School in Santa Clarita, California. This, of course, is horrific, and this senseless violence has to stop. How many more tragedies do we have to endure to pass serious gun control reform laws in this country? And I also want to thank our veterans for their selfless service to our country. Although Veterans Day was on Monday, our gratitude for their service is endless, and I really want to thank all the veterans of New York City, those who are currently serving, those who are no longer serving but still proudly wear the uniform and have dedicated their lives to supporting and defending our country. As I do at each stated, I want to recognize some of the important events that have happened recently. Last week, as you mentioned, Mr. Public Advocate, was Election Day, and for the very first time, early voting was an option. I personally took advantage of this to cast my vote early, and I know many New Yorkers who did the same. We need more bold moves to strengthen our democracy. New Yorkers voted on major changes to our city's constitution, thanks to the Charter Revision Commission. The commission was created by the city council with now Attorney General Letitia James, who was then public advocate, and Manhattan Borough President Gil Brewer, and I want to thank all the members of the Charter Revision Commission who worked for over a year as volunteers to get this right. I'm grateful for their service and how hard they listened to the public. I also want to congratulate the winners in that election last week, and a few of them are our public advocate Jumani Williams, our council member and colleague Farah Lewis, and future district attorney Melinda Katz as well. I want to congratulate them. Congratulations, Farah. I feel like we've congratulated you like nine times since you've joined the body, so we are really, really grateful that you're here. As I do at every stated, I want to recognize some of the major losses that our city has faced recently. Last week... Shh. Last week, retired FDNY firefighter Cecilia Cox died at the age of sixty-eight. Cecilia was a true trailblazer and one of the first women to join the department. She joined in nineteen eighty-two after suing for discrimination, and she served for over twenty years in the FDNY. We are deeply, deeply grateful for her courage, for her trailblazing, and for her service. The NYPD also suffered a loss. Linda Mercer was a nine-eleven first responder and traffic enforcement agent who died, yet again, another victim of nine-eleven-related cancer. She passed away on November sixth. She fought tirelessly for other first responders, particularly non-uniform personnel who suffered from nine-eleven-related diseases. All of New York will be forever grateful for Linda's courage that never took a day off. My condolences are with the families of Cecilia Cox and Linda Mercer and both the FDNY and the NYPD, and I'd ask us to all stand for a moment of silence to honor Cecilia and Linda. This month, we're also celebrating National American Indian Heritage Month, and this month is a reminder to our nation's first people to honor the land that we are standing on. We are also celebrating Puerto Rican Heritage Month and the many, many contributions of Puerto Rican New Yorkers. We had a great ceremony here last night in the chambers, and I am really grateful for the work that everyone has been doing, and I especially want to say, I think I can speak for all of us when I say that Puerto Rico is a special place. Many of us were just there last weekend, especially for our city, which has so many ties to the island. New York wouldn't be what it is today without the contributions of both Puerto Ricans and Native Americans, and I'm happy to be honoring them this month. This week also kicked off Transgender Awareness Week, a week dedicated to raising the visibility of trans people while also working to address issues that members of the community face. The LGBT Caucus, led by Chair Drum, has been hosting a Trans Day of Awareness exhibit in the City Hall Rotunda. It was happening today in partnership with the LaGuardia and Wagner Archives, and I want to thank Danny for making this exhibit extra special by sharing his collection of photos featuring many trans leaders from Jackson Heights who are members of Make the Road New York and are great New Yorkers. We must continue to stand with the trans community, and on Trans Day of Remembrance, November twentieth, we'll remember those who we have lost to violence. So please, before you leave the building today, check out the exhibition in the rotunda. Last but not least, saddens me to announce that the council is losing a legendary figure and a good friend to me. I don't even want to read it. Rob Newman is retiring from the council after almost twenty-one years of service to this legislative body. He started on the General Welfare Committee, where he exposed the city's failed approach to poverty. Rob has served in so, so, so many invaluable roles, helping all of us navigate the laws that govern the city and the best ways to improve or change them. He's overseen the drafting and introduction of literally thousands of bills that have become law in this city and shepherded so many of them in working with all of us. His work has helped expand opportunities for minority and women-owned businesses, created some of the most rigorous campaign finance laws in the entire country, and he proudly has limited local cooperation with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. He's truly made New York greater and more equal, and on a personal note, I am so proud that Rob has been my counsel for the last almost two years, someone who I've talked to almost every single day, someone who I've relied upon for wisdom and counsel, someone who is always balancing thirty different things for me at a time and always gets the job done. The Master Plans Bill that we just passed, the Master Streets Plan Bill that we just passed a couple of weeks ago, which will revolutionize the way we move around and make our city safer, would not have been possible without Rob Newman's input and guidance. The state of the city I gave earlier this year, calling for municipal control, and the hundred-and-four-page report that accompanied it, was led by Rob and his team, and it is true of so much of the work that we have done together has been done in the spirit of service and the spirit of Rob's love of New York City, but also his love of this body. I will miss him terribly, but he has also created a top-notch legislative team. I'm really grateful for Kelly Taylor and their entire team. He's created a top-notch team, so his legacy will live on. Rob, you will be missed. Now let's dive into our legislative agenda. We'll be voting on the following land use items. To application in Councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer's district, Hunter's Point South Parcels F and G, which will facilitate two mixed-use buildings, including eight-hundred-and-fifty affordable housing units, and forty-four oh-one Northern Boulevard rezoning, zoning to facilitate the construction of a new mixed-use building. The application will be modified to include MIH Option One. The Peninsula Hospital Site redevelopment will facilitate the development of over two million square feet, including almost two thousand affordable units, two hundred senior units, and new community facilities. I want to congratulate Councilmember Richards for his hard work on this application. Finally, forty-seven ninety-seven Third Avenue is a technical change in Councilmember Richie Torres's district, and then there is the East Side Coastal Resiliency Project. This is a critical project about coastal resiliency and climate resiliency for the east side of Manhattan. Councilmembers Rivera, Powers, and Chin were tireless advocates for their communities, but also have been mindful about the project's central goal, which was to realize much-needed infrastructure improvement to reduce flood risk and improve access to the waterfront, and I want to thank them for their hard work on this. Out of the Finance Committee, the council will vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction number seventeen eighty, sponsored by Chair Danny Drum and supported by the administration, will extend the current rate of the additional tax on the occupancy of hotel rooms at five-point-eight-seventy percent through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. There are three pre-considered resolutions, all sponsored by our Finance Chair, which together will re-adopt the fiscal twenty-twenty property tax rates to provide tax relief to Class One and Class Two homeowners. Because of the council's action today, Class One rates will rise by only one-point-two percent over the twenty-nineteen rates, instead of six-point-three percent, thereby saving typical homeowners about three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars per year, and Class Two rates will be the lowest they've been since the fiscal two thousand and nine budget. There is J-two, which is in Councilmember Denise Miller's district in Queens, and it will receive a full forty-year Article eleven property tax exemption to construct five-hundred-and-forty-three units of affordable rental housing. Moving on, the council will be voting on the following piece of legislation. Our first piece of legislation is related to the criminal justice work that the council's been doing. Introduction number eleven fifty-six A, sponsored by Councilmember Steve Levin, would require the Office of Nightlife to report on the frequency and effects of multi-agency response to community hotspot march operations across the city. The NYPD would be required to provide written notifications to establishment owners at least thirty days before their inclusion in a potential march operation, which must outline the conditions that need to be remedied. I want to thank from the staff Maxwell Kempfer for his work on that bill. Now, a few health bills. Today, we're celebrating World Diabetes Day, and what a timely way to raise awareness and fight against this illness than through policy. Introduction number thirteen sixty-one B, sponsored by our Health Committee Chair, Mark Levine, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to report twice a year on the rate of diabetes-related health problems in New York City and to compile a comprehensive report and recommendations by two thousand and twenty-one. I want to thank Councilmember Levine for his work on spearheading this important piece of legislation, and I want to acknowledge the tireless work of Chris Norwood, the founder and executive director of Health People and the entire Health People team, especially their peer educators. This legislation would not have been possible without her work and their work to raise awareness of diabetes. When I was Health Committee Chair, Chris Norwood would not leave me alone about getting this done, and I'm glad that her advocacy... Is she here today? Is she up there? Health People's here in the house? Where's Chris? There's Chris. Chris, I want to thank you for your really, really important work. Next is Introduction fifteen ninety-eight A, sponsored by Councilmember Robert Holden, which would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to provide information regarding city services available for the proper disposal of deceased animals and to post information online. And Introduction number fourteen ninety-six A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, would require an animal shelter directed by a sheriff or city marshal executing a warrant of eviction or any order of judgment granting legal possession to retrieve a companion animal from such premises as expeditiously as possible after receiving such direction, and I want to thank the staff from the Health Committee who worked on this, Z. Emmanuel Halu, Sarah List, and Emily Balkan. Next, we'll be voting on a package of legislation aimed at increasing diversity in New York City public schools and ensuring that all children throughout each borough have access to equal education opportunities. New York City prides itself on its diversity, but sadly, our schools are the most segregated in the United States of America. Equity takes work. Desegregation takes work. Real diversity in our schools takes work. It doesn't happen by magic, and these bills, I believe, are a major step in the right direction. We still have a tremendous amount of work to do, but I am very proud of this package and what it means for our students and families, and I want to single out the Chair of our Education Committee, Chair Traeger, who has been working so hard on this issue, shepherded these bills through the committee, and he has a bill that I'll speak about in a moment. But the first bill is Introduction number fifteen forty-seven A, sponsored by Councilmember Brad Lander, who has been a tireless champion and advocate on these issues, which would require the New York City Department of Education to expand its current student demographic data reporting and to provide data by grade level. DOE is already required to report on the diversity of students in public schools and its efforts to encourage diversity within schools from grades kindergarten through twelve. The bill also requires DOE to report on a side-by-side comparison of the racial and ethnic demographics of each school or special program with the racial and ethnic demographics of the larger attendant zone and community school district. This will make the existing reporting requirement more robust and allow the city council, advocates, and others to drill down deeper into the segregation that exists in our schools and the department's efforts to remedy that. Introduction number fifteen fifty-four B, sponsored by our Education Chair, Mark Traeger, would mandate the New York City Department of Education to report on the demographics of school staff, including leadership, teaching staff, and other professional and paraprofessional staff. Introduction number fifteen fifty-two B, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera and myself, would mandate that the establishment of district diversity working groups in each community school district. These working groups would work to facilitate the creation and publishing of public input integration plans in every school district. The working groups would be made up of Department of Education staff, students, parents, teachers, principals, administrators, and community advocates, and each group may also choose to partner with a community-based organization. We also have an education bill and two pieces of housing legislation sponsored by public advocate Jumani Williams that the council will be voting on today. Congratulations, Jumani. Introduction number fifteen fifty A, sponsored by the public advocate, would codify the public. regarding city services available for the proper disposal of deceased animals and to post information online. And Introduction number fourteen ninety-six A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, would require an animal shelter directed by a sheriff or city marshal executing a warrant of eviction or any order of judgment granting legal possession to retrieve a companion animal from such premises as expeditiously as possible after receiving such direction. And I want to thank the staff from the Health Committee who worked on this, Zee Emanuel Halu, Sarah List, and Emily Balkan. Next, we'll be voting on a package of legislation aimed at increasing diversity in New York City public schools and ensuring that all children throughout each borough have access to equal education opportunities. New York City prides itself on its diversity, but sadly, our schools are the most segregated in the United States of America. Equity takes work, desegregation takes work, real diversity in our schools takes work. It doesn't happen by magic, and these bills, I believe, are a major step in the right direction. We still have a tremendous amount of work to do, but I am very proud of this package and what it means for our students and families. And I want to single out the Chair of our Education Committee, Chair Traeger, who has been working so hard on this issue, shepherded these bills through the committee, and he has a bill that I'll speak about in a moment. But the first bill is Introduction number fifteen forty-seven A, sponsored by Councilmember Brad Lander, who has been a tireless champion and advocate on these issues, which would require the New York City Department of Education to expand its current student demographic data reporting and to provide data by grade level. DOE is already required to report on the diversity of students in public schools and its efforts to encourage diversity within schools from grades kindergarten through twelve. The bill also requires DOE to report on a side-by-side comparison of the racial and ethnic demographics of each school or special program with the racial and ethnic demographics of the larger attendant zone and community school district. This will make the existing reporting requirement more robust and allow the City Council, advocates, and others to drill down deeper into the segregation that exists in our schools and the department's efforts to remedy that. Introduction number fifteen fifty-four B, sponsored by our Education Chair, Mark Traeger, would mandate the New York City Department of Education to report on the demographics of school staff, including leadership, teaching staff, and other professional and paraprofessional staff. Introduction number fifteen fifty-two B, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera and myself, would mandate that the establishment of district diversity working groups in each community school district. These working groups would work to facilitate the creation and publishing of public input integration plans in every school district. The working groups would be made up of Department of Education staff, students, parents, teachers, principals, administrators, and community advocates, and each group may also choose to partner with a community-based organization. We also have an education bill and two pieces of housing legislation sponsored by public advocate Jumani Williams that the council will be voting on today. Congratulations, Jumani. Introduction number fifteen fifty A, sponsored by the public advocate, would codify the School Diversity Advisory Group. The S-DAG was established in two thousand and seventeen by the mayor and by the New York City Department of Education as part of their Diversity in New York City Public Schools Plan, and it was designed to make formal policy recommendations to the mayor and chancellor relating to increasing diversity in our schools. This bill would ensure that the work continues in the future, and the membership of the advisory group will now include appointments from the Speaker of the Council and a public advocate appointment in addition to the mayoral appointments that already existed. And I want to thank the staff that worked on this bill with the public advocate, Malcolm Butehorn, Jan Atwell, and Kalima Johnson. Public Advocate Williams is also sponsoring Introduction number seven sixteen A, which would require the Department of Housing, Preservation, and Development to annually report certain information regarding the waiting lists of Mitchell-Lama housing developments, including the number who were skipped and the number of complaints received about Mitchell-Lama waiting lists. And I want to thank Audrey San from the staff for working on this bill. And finally, the public advocate is sponsoring Introduction number seven twenty C, which would allow not-for-profit organizations with at least three years of construction-related workforce development or training experience to apply the Department of Buildings for approval as a site safety training provider. And I want to thank Megan Chen and Austin Branford from the staff, and I congratulate the public advocate on these three bills that we're voting on today. Next, the council will vote on two additional pieces of legislation related to housing lotteries introduced by council members. Introduction number five sixty-four A, sponsored by Councilmember Mark Traeger, would require HPD to report on housing lottery outcomes, including applicant race or ethnicity and applicant preference category at the citywide and borough-wide levels, and on applicant household size and applicant household income at the citywide borough and community district levels. And I want to thank from the staff, Janan Zilka for working on this, and she worked on the next bill as well, which is Introduction number five fifty A, sponsored by Councilmember Mark Levine, which would require HPD to report on the housing lottery process, including complaints about housing lotteries, planned improvements to housing lotteries, and housing lottery methodologies. The council will also be voting on a very important piece of legislation aimed at ensuring fair wages for workers. Introduction number thirteen twenty-one C, sponsored by Councilmember Raphael Espinal, would remove the current exemption in the existing prevailing wage law, Local Law Twenty-seven of two thousand and twelve, for affordable housing projects and nonprofit developers at residential projects. Local Law Twenty-seven of two thousand and twelve requires building service workers to be paid the prevailing wage in buildings where the developer receives at least a million dollars in discretionary financial assistance from the city or a city economic development entity. Accordingly, building service workers in most residential projects receiving financial assistance of more than a million dollars for new construction or preservation would be required to pay the prevailing wage. This bill exempts smaller residential projects with fewer than one-hundred-and-twenty units, certain supportive housing projects, deeply affordable preservation projects, and NYCHA projects financed through the Federal Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. I really, really want to thank Thirty-two B J President Kyle Bragg and also Candace Tolliver from Thirty-two B J. Kyle, I believe, is here with us. Where is he? There he is. I want to thank Kyle, and I see David from his team here as well, because this bill was very complicated. This bill was a bill of us trying to do two things, which is to raise the wages of workers throughout New York City, because we believe everyone should have a pathway to the middle class, while at the same time being thoughtful and balanced on exempting projects that were providing supportive housing or deeply affordable housing. And I know that Councilmember Espinal worked with Thirty-two B J and the staff here to strike that balance, to ensure that we are not having to make a trade-off or subsidizing potential projects across New York City that are not paying the workers a living wage, a prevailing wage, which allows them to move into the middle class. So I want to thank him for his work and dedication in getting this legislation passed responsibly and for continuing to fight for fair wages and better working conditions for all New Yorkers. And from the staff, I want to thank Michelle Lee, Malcolm Butehorn, and from my team, Rob Newman, for his work on this. His swan song was this bill. Finally, today, the council is voting on a revolutionary package of legislation that will make what some may know as Hart Island and others know as the city's Potter's Field a more respectful resting place for those who are buried there. Since eighteen sixty-nine, Hart Island has been used as New York City's public burial ground. Located off the coast of City Island in the Bronx, many estimations report that there are over one million people buried there. In two thousand and eighteen alone, twelve-hundred-and-thirteen people were buried on Hart Island. I believe that how we remember those who came before us says a lot about our moral compass and about who we are as people. The people who have been buried at Hart Island were, in many cases, the folks who are most marginalized in life. Many were immigrants with no family here to claim them. Many could not afford funerals. Many were AIDS victims, people who died at the height of the AIDS epidemic, shunned by society and often by their own families. I'm happy to say that there has been improved access to Hart Island thanks to the work of advocates who lobbied for those changes. And I specifically want to thank Melinda Hunt, who is with us today, for her tireless advocacy on this. But even with those changes, those visiting Hart Island still feel as though they are visiting a prison when they are going to the island. I visited there December of last year, a little less than a year ago. I went with Councilmember Rodriguez, who is sponsoring this bill, and it is a very moving place. There is a section on the southern part of the island, separate from all the other plots, where people are buried just for people who died of AIDS. And they were buried separate from everyone else, even though, once you die, you can't give someone HIV and AIDS. But it showed the level of hysteria that was happening at the time. And they're buried in a section with not many markers even showing where they are. It's the largest, we believe, cemetery in the world for people who have died from HIV and AIDS. So today, we are finally taking Hart Island back. A resting place should not be a place that is run by the Department of Corrections. We are transferring the property to the Department of Parks and Recreation. And that is what Introduction number nine oh six A, sponsored by Councilmember Adonis Rodriguez, who has been a tireless advocate on this, would do. It would transfer jurisdiction of the island from DOC to the Department of Parks and Recreation. Burials would be allowed to continue pursuant to rules and regulations established by the Department of Social Services and by the Department of Parks and Recreation or any other agency designated by the mayor in the case of a disagreement between DSS and DPR. We have another bill from Councilmember Rodriguez on this issue, Introduction number nine oh nine B, which would require the Department of Transportation or another agency designated by the mayor to develop a transportation plan for public travel, including ferry service to and from Hart Island. This bill requires consideration of multiple departure locations and factors such as changing conditions and future uses of Hart Island. The agency would also have to submit a report on its plan and post the report on its website within one year of the bill's effective date. Next, we have Introduction fifteen eighty A, sponsored by Councilmember Debbie Rose, which would require a public hearing on public burials to allow the public the opportunity to discuss our public burial laws, rules, regulations, policies, and procedures relating to public burials. Though this hearing, the public would be able to recommend at this hearing, the public would be able to recommend changes to these programs and consider the feasibility of alternative programs. This bill would require the Department of Social Services to submit a report summarizing and responding to comments received at a hearing by two thousand and twenty. And lastly, Introduction number fifteen fifty-nine A, sponsored by Councilmember Diana Ayala, would require the Department of Social Services to establish an office to provide support and assistance to individuals who have lost a loved one and needed information about how about in helping access public burials, a burial allowance, or a similar program. This office would provide services, including explaining the option of public burials and assistance in applying for a public burial allowance. And I want to thank the staff who has worked so passionately on this package of bills. I really, really want to thank them and the great job they've done on this. I want to thank Zee Emanuel Halu, Sarah List, Emily Balkan, Chris Artori, Patrick Mulvahill, and James DiGiavani. And, Mr. Public Advocate, that is our very brief, short agenda for today, and I want to thank all the council members for their work in getting these bills to the place where we can vote on them. Congratulations to you. And I also, before we move on from speaker time, I want to give you as much opportunity as you need to discuss the three exciting bills that you're passing today.
Thank you so much for that. App description as well. I am happy to speak mine, which I will. I want to give my colleagues an opportunity first, as we are moving to a discussion of general orders. First, we have Councilmembers Jonai, followed by Rivera and Chin.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. First of all, on Veterans Day, I just want to reiterate that we can never do enough for our veterans, and we should strive to do more. To my dear friend, Rob Newman, congratulations in your endeavors. Mr. Public Advocate, thank you for allowing me to speak up on Hart Island. Hart Island falls solely within my district, and I want to reiterate the concerns of Hart Island. The priority should have been and should be focused on preserving that island, preventing remains and bones from washing out into the Long Island Sound, which have been going on for decades. With that being said, those that are buried there should be treated with the utmost respect and dignity. The families that have family members and loved ones buried there should be treated with dignity and respect. Three of the four bills being introduced leave too much uncertainty. Hart Island means a great deal to many people, not only the family members that have loved ones buried there, but including the surrounding neighborhoods and the community that has impacted. I've heard from hundreds of residents with concerns that have expressed strong desires to be a part of included in the decision-making process with respect and possibly changing to visitation rights, hours, burial alternatives, record-keeping, and transportation options. Originally, these bills created a task force, which had been replaced instead and amended with a public hearing. I have no faith that this administration and its city agencies will rightfully listen to the concerns of those who have loved ones buried on Hart Island, or that this administration will listen and respect the concerns of the local community, or that the resources that are needed...
Councilmember, given the amount of bills, I'm going to just ask if you can wrap up.
Or that the resources that are needed will be committed to the future of the island. Simply, these bills in their current form put the future of Hart Island on the administration, the department, and the agencies it controls. I'm not okay with that, and nor should the members in this room.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rivera, followed by Councilmember Chin Powers.
Thank you for letting me speak briefly about the historic vote we are taking today for climate change protections. As we deal with this very real and present danger, undoubtedly one of the greatest threats of our lifetimes and certainly this century. For the last seven years, I've watched my community's slow and painful recovery from the physical and emotional damage Superstorm Sandy has wreaked on all of us. We are lucky that we haven't seen a storm as bad as Sandy's since, but it's inevitable, and we cannot let our good fortune distract us from moving forward as we face more intense storms, flooding, and destruction. Today, we have a chance with the East Side Coastal Resiliency Project to not only approve real protections, but also address decades of environmental ignorance on the Lower East Side. I move forward with negotiations, thinking of injustices we have faced as a community, the FDR Drive built by Robert Moses with no concept of its environmental impact, lead-lined apartments in our NYCHA campuses that have still not been repaired, and of course, the mole that was exacerbated after Hurricane Sandy's waters flooded our homes and our businesses. That is why this agreement we reached this week for ESCR goes beyond protections for the next one hundred years, brings in a phased project design, a new amphitheater, ballfields, tennis courts, and bridges, all of what we fought for in this plan since 2012. With this vote, we are also bringing a long list of community improvements to over seventeen parks, six NYCHA campuses, partnerships with community gardens, extended hours at school recreation sites, and new barbecue areas. We're voting to expand pedestrian-focused infrastructure with commitments for new protected bike lanes in Alphabet City and the expansion of closed-street programming that includes pocket parks. And we're planning for the future with a new disaster-preparedness campaign for our frontline residents and a commitment to study the future of the FDR Drive that must include reduced vehicle use and emissions. If I could just have a minute, I've been working on this for a long time.
There's another opportunity when they vote. Just have a lot, so if you can wrap up.
Okay. But as this project spanning three council districts moves forward, it's clear that the community's trust with the city surrounding this project must continue to be repaired. I certainly understand the mistrust after decades of neglect certain neighborhoods have experienced at the hands of all levels of government, especially the recovery process that NYCHA endures to this day. I will say all of my thank-yous when we vote, and this is a really important, personal project for me. I was a principal organizer after Hurricane Sandy, and to finally bring protections to my community, I am really, really proud of us all today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Chin Powers, followed by Rodriguez and Menchaca.
Thank you, Public Advocate. The serious threat that so many fear about climate change is a painful reality already felt by our waterfront community, especially after Hurricane Sandy. Seven years later, we're still bouncing back. Our east side community, especially NYCHA residents, cannot afford to wait another seven years for coastal protection and resiliency improvement that they should have received long ago. Today's vote on the East Side Coastal Resiliency Agreement will deliver on the promise we made to act so that their lives will not be uprooted when the next storm hits. The role leading to today's vote was not easy by any mean, and we thank our constituents for pushing us to fight for bolder open space improvement, parks mitigation, and NYCHA protection. And I'm thankful to the leadership of our speaker and especially my colleague, Councilmember Rivera, and our partner, Councilmember Power, and our wonderful land use staff for persisting on greater transparency, more engagement, and stronger community investment. This vote is a long time coming, and I'm grateful for the work that brought us here to this point. This is a win for resiliency, for climate action, and for ensuring that our most vulnerable waterfront community are given the attention that they deserve. And I urge all my colleagues to vote yes on this. And I also wanted to take this time to thank the administration for partnering and working with us, the Commissioner of DDC, Lorraine Grillo, Jamie Torres Springer, Deputy Commissioner, Park Commissioner Silver, Alisa Cobb-Colin, Alda Chan, the Mayor's Office of Legislative Fair, Joe Toronto, Gabby Dan, Aliel, Sean Fitzpatrick, and our Community Board, Community Board Three, Trevor Holland, Susan Stesser, and Jim Sheldon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmembers Powers, Rodriguez, and Menchaca.
Thank you. I will join Councilmember Chin and Rivera to speak on the East Side Coastal Resiliency Project, which, to me, is a critical step in New York City's fight against climate change. As any of us who live near the water during Superstorm Sandy, including myself, can attest, protecting our communities from flooding and the next storm is absolutely vital. Seven years ago, as the river flooded and the water overtook all of our waterfront parks, we lost power, buildings were flooded, services that residents rely on were disrupted, and this is only our part of it. We have a citywide impact on it when it comes to flooding. Since we began discussing the new plan last fall, my colleagues and I have worked tirelessly to make sure it maintained the balance between preparing for a future where climate crisis is an everyday reality, while also guaranteeing that our parks and our communities would be restored and improved. To reject this plan today, to vote no, would be putting us on an uncertain path toward resiliency, would be jeopardizing hundreds of millions of dollars in federal funding allocated for this specific project, and set a precedent of throwing away a well-developed, well-thought, and hard-fought plan out the window for every community that's going to have to go through this in the future. As I've sat here today, I've talked to my colleagues about their needs and their desires to have their communities in the outer boroughs and other places that were affected also be protected against a new superstorm, because we all are in a new reality. protected against a new superstorm, because we all are in a new reality where climate change is the reality, and all of our communities still remain unprotected against the next storm, which could happen any day or any year in the future. It is our responsibility as council members, and my view is, to find that balance between protecting our communities and doing those right for the 100,000 people who will be protected under this plan. Many of you here represent other parts of the city that were hit just as hard as my district and others here today by Superstorm Sandy, and it's my hope that we have a plan today that was acknowledged the needs of the community, has found the right balance between resiliency and the community needs, and has made very significant investments that will be both short, medium, and long-term investments in our community. I do support it. I hope you'll join us in the vote to support it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmembers Rodriguez, Munchakka, and Richards.
Thank you, Public Advocate. First of all, thank you, Speaker Johnson. As I said at the pre-state meeting, what I have experienced in your leadership is that we've been able to pass a number of bill that I was told that the city didn't have the authority to do it, or that we couldn't do it. So this was one of those type of bill that my previous colleague, Elizabeth Crowley, she tried to move on. Unfortunately, she was told that the city couldn't do it. Same thing happened for me with the transfer closing Rikers Island. I put language, I was told the city couldn't do it. Fair, fair, I was told that the city couldn't do it. Establishing your PK, I was told that the city couldn't do it. And what we have seen is that when we have a progressive body, and we have a leadership like you, like here, we are moving bills. And I know that there's many others to come. When I met with members of the Latino communities, Dominican, Puerto Ricans, Garifona, when I meet and talk to the African community from Nigeria and other places, when I talk to anyone who has been immigrants like myself, what I had heard is one thing. We have failed to 1 million family, 1 million body have been buried in the largest public cemetery in the whole United States of America. Who are those people? Those people are black. They was buried after the Civil War, because some white people, they didn't want to be buried together with black people. So they was brought to that location. They're immigrants. They are the generation that we lost during the HIV. They are hard-working individuals that unfortunately we closed that place where we want to be united, giving the respect to them, being able to visit them. Before 2014, no one was able to visit Rikers Island. Now we still have restrictions, but we transferred the island. What we are saying is that we live progressive, that from now on, the largest public cemetery will be open to everyone. Gracias, este cementerio, un templo sagrado, se abre de aquí para adelante para darle respeto a los inmigrantes, a los pobres que están enterrados en ese lugar. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmembers Munchakka and Richards.
Thank you. I would like to speak on Intro 720C and really ask everyone to support this bill. You know, in 2017, we passed what is now Local Law 196. This really was a kind of first big move that brought union workers and non-union workers together to address something that's been happening and continues to happen to this day, the deaths on construction sites. Many of the workers that work on construction sites are immigrant workers, those who are dying. Many of them are Spanish-speaking, but they're immigrants. The construction that we are seeing continues to suffer from insufficient safety training and the exploitation that happens by developers and the construction industry. But we have a solution. 720C will allow for a new opportunity for MWBEs and day labor organizations that we work with every day in our neighborhoods to be able to be on the ground, training the men and women who are on our construction sites. This law allows for that access to happen in multiple languages, to include Spanish and other languages in our communities, specifically in immigrant communities, and MWBE opportunities. Intro 720C would close that loop and allow groups who serve the city's most vulnerable construction workers to get the safety training needed. I want to thank Jason Goldman and Speaker Johnson for their support, but also the Progressive Caucus and the BLAC who came in this week and really ensured that there was broad support across the council. Thank you so much, and I look forward to passing this. Finally, though, actually, in my 13 seconds, Jomani, our Public Advocate, we were doing this work last session, and we needed to close this loop, and we did it. And I just want to say thank you. You've been leading this from the beginning, and I'm just happy to call you my brother.
Thank you. If you want to keep talking about me, I might give you more time.
Okay, can I?
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Richards.
Thank you. Want to talk about the Peninsula Hospital rezoning. What a great day for the people of the Rockaways, but in particular for the people who reside in both Edgemere and Arver, in a neighborhood I actually lived in, right across the street from the site. This neighborhood has always had the potential to not only serve as a retail destination for local residents, but a tourist attraction as well. However, like many neighborhoods on the eastern portion of the Rockaways, sorely needed infrastructure, affordable housing, quality jobs, and a lack of space for our young people to congregate have been nonexistent. This vacuum created immense challenges, such as the highest unemployment rate in Queens, high rates of obesity due to a lack of access to a supermarket in close proximity to thousands of public housing residents and homeowners. But today, I'm happy to announce the Edgemere Commons Project seeks to address these systematic issues. This project will serve as a template for what a resilient mixed-use development should look like in the 21st century. During a time when our city is facing one of the largest housing crises we have ever witnessed, this project will produce over 2,000 units of true affordable housing, serving a healthy mix of incomes as low as 30% AMI. The addition of much-needed senior housing units are also a big win for those who wish to age and place gracefully in the Rockaways. I want my community to know we heard you loud and clear on the need to ensure we just aren't building housing, but addressing the needs of our community as well. This is why I'm happy to announce the creation of a new community center, healthcare facility, supermarket, open space, and much-needed local and destination retail as well. The combination of these will enable us to stimulate the economy in Edgemere and ensure our youth and their families will have a safe space for activities. Lastly, I'm happy to announce we've reached an agreement with the ARCA companies and 32BJ, and I want to thank Kyle Bragg for all of his hard work to crossing, to getting this over the line. This will ensure we are in subsidizing, low-paying jobs. We also have an agreement with the developer for 35% local hiring and 30% MWBE, and also a fund to ensure youth and community development and workforce could be tracked properly. I just want to close by thanking the amazing land use staff led by Raju Man, John Douglas, Amy Levington, and Julie Lubin, and both of our chairs, both Salamanca and Moya, for their hard work on this application as well. Urge my colleagues to vote aye.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Just really briefly, I would like to encourage my colleagues to vote on the three bills before you today. First one, 1550, School Diversity Advisory Group. I want to thank the staff, Speaker, and Councilmember Trager to codify into law the committee that just finished their work in dealing with school diversity. This will make sure that there is a mixture of voices, from students to parents and teachers. And of course, we want to make sure that the council had some people appointed as well to provide some balance, and the Public Advocates Office, because of course, Public Advocates got to get some as well. And I want to thank the Speaker, and a big shout-out to Councilmember Munchakka, and Zarian Assaw from the Progressive Caucus, Brandon Clark from the Black Latin and Asian Caucus, of course, Jason Goldman around 720, and the rest of the staff. As Councilmember Munchakka mentioned, we've been working on this for a very long time. It will make a lot of groups happy, who we assured them that when we passed this bill a few years ago, they would have access to be able to provide this kind of training, and now they will. We'll be opening up the people who can provide the training, which will open up the people who can get the training, so that we can get to the deadline that everyone agreed to. Lastly, 716A is a Mitchell Lama bill. I'm very excited about this. Been working for a very long time. People may have heard of the kind of things that have been going on around Mitchell Lama waiting lists. In fact, early this year, three people were arrested for bribery. It was one of the hearings that this council had where the administration actually had nothing. They provided nothing. So this will make these lists be transparent and public, so everyone can see. And I thank the Speaker. I thank the Chair, Carnegie, for this. And I thank this body for allowing me to get these bills passed. Thank you so much. And report of special committees? Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. Intro 1321C, prevailing wage law.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education. Intro 1547A through Intro 1554B. On the same page, diversity in public schools.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance. Intro 1780, hotel taxes.
Coupled to general orders.
Pre-considered reso 1152 through pre-considered reso 1154 on Page 3, property taxes.
Coupled to general orders.
Pre-considered reso 1155, organization funding.
Coupled to general orders.
Pre-considered LU 577 and reso 1157 tax exemption.
Coupled to general orders.
Report of the Committee on Health. Intro 1361B, diabetes reporting.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Intro 1496A, companion animals.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Intro 1559A through Intro 1598A on Page 4, public burial and related issues.
I want to give a special shout-out to Emily Balkan from the staff, who has worked tirelessly on this issue, and amended and coupled to general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Intro 550A and 564A, housing lottery system.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Intro 716A, Mitchell Lama developments.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Intro 720C, site safety training.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Report of the Committee on Justice System. Intro 1156A, community hotspots.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use. LU 548 through LU 554 on Page 7, various applications.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
Excuse me. LU 558 and reso 115825, Central Park West.
Coupled to be filed pursuant to a letter of withdrawal.
LU 559 and 560 Northern Boulevard zoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
LU 563 and reso 1159 Hunters Point South.
Coupled to general orders.
LU 571 and reso 1160, 4797 Third Avenue.
Coupled to general orders.
Pre-considered LU 578 and reso 1161, and pre-considered LU 579 and reso 1162 Bronx Special Districts.
Coupled to be filed pursuant to letter of withdrawal.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation. Intro 906A, Hart Island.
Amended and coupled to general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation. Intro 909B, Hart Island travel plan.
Another shout-out to Melinda Hunt. Amended and coupled to general orders.
On the general order calendar, LU 548 and reso 1163 through LU 560 and reso 1171 on Page 12, various applications returned from city planning.
Coupled to general orders.
Resolution appointing various persons, Commissioner Deeds.
Coupled to general orders, and at this time, I'm asking for roll-call vote on all of the items on today's general order calendar.
Levin.
I vote aye on all, and I want to just thank on the March Bill, the Black Institute, New York City Artists Coalition, Olympia Kazi, Julia Friedenberg, Jamie Burkhart, Ode to Babel, Marva Babel, staff, Maxwell Camper Williams, Keishorn Denny, my colleague Rafael Espinal, and Sarah Conklin, and everyone else that worked on that bill. And with that, I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Adams.
Aye on all.
Ampri Samuel.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Barron.
Aye on all, with the exception of 563, on which I'm voting no, and I am abstaining on 548 and 549 and the accompanying resolutions.
Brennan.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of 1780, 1152, 53, and 54.
Cabrera.
Aye on all.
Maddio.
I don't know if he's still here, but I just want to wish Rob Newman the best in his future endeavors. Congratulations. I thank you for your friendship, and thank you for the work you did on our AED bills, and how person it was for you and your son, and I'm glad we can see those AED bills through. And we're going to miss you here at the council. With that, I'm voting no on 1152, 1153, 1154, 1156, 1321, 1547, 1550, 1552, 1554, and 1780, and aye on what's left.
Chin.
Congratulations to all my colleagues on passing there. Great legislations, and I probably vote aye on all.
I appreciate it.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carnegie.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
So whether you're a homeowner in Bed-Stuy, Bay Ridge, or Baychester, the burden of property taxes are too much for all New Yorkers to bear, particularly for lower and middle-income individuals who are already, who aren't well-served by the outdated tax system. Today, we have the opportunity to support tax relief for property owners in New York City, but it's not enough. A state formula dictates the tax rates for property owners in the city, and New York City has very little leverage to change the effective rates. We requested that the state change one component in the formula, which the governor has done, and this will take the tax burden for tax Class II properties to the lowest they've been since fiscal year 2009. Additionally, Class I properties will see a slight reduction in their tax burden, but it's still be a higher rate than last year. I'm glad that we can do this little bit today, but the real fix is in the long term. The Speaker and the mayor have called for a reform commission, and we expect a report from that group at the end of this year. I look forward to reading their findings and getting to work with my colleagues to provide tax relief to all New Yorkers' property and property owners. I must highlight that this is an important issue in every part of the city, regardless of race and heritage. Meaningful change for all New Yorkers means holistic change, and I look forward to getting that done one day. With that being said, I'm aye on everything except 1152, 53, and 54.
Doish.
Aye on all, with the exception of 1580, 906, 909, 1780, and resos 1152, 1153, and
Drum. Espinal.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
It's no secret that the cost of living in this city has dramatically gone up, while people's wages have stayed stagnant, and because of that, we are, one of the reasons is that we are, one of those reasons that, because of that, we are in affordable housing crisis. And we have been working to build affordable housing across the city, but a lot of that affordable housing has workers that are making a minimum wage. And what we're passing a bill, 1321B, that would require affordable housing to have workers being paid a prevailing wage. We worked diligently to get this bill passed. We worked with all stakeholders, from hearing stories from the workers, worked with affordable housing groups to figure out, to find the right balance, that we're building real affordable housing while also making sure that people are getting paid a prevailing wage to continue to be able to put food on their table and pay their rents. So I am proud of this bill. I want to thank 32BJ. I want to thank the Speaker. I want to thank his staff. I want to thank Rob Newman, who have put in a lot of hours to get this done. And I want to thank my colleagues, who have all signed on to get this passed. So with that said, I vote aye on all. Also, sorry, I want to congratulate Steve Levin on passing the March Bill. It's a bill that I was super supportive of, and it's going to be able to support a lot of the marginalized communities that continue to be overpoliced upon in the nightlife community. So I'm very proud of that bill being passed, and a lot of congratulations to the New York City Artists Coalition. Thank you.
Eugene.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. I just want to thank and commend us, the Chair, Levin, the Chair of the Health Committee, for this very important bill on diabetes. And, you know, diabetes is a very serious disease affecting many people in New York City and throughout the world, and I think that we have the moral mandate to do everything that we can do to ensure that we can keep people healthy and to contribute the well-being of, to the well-being of the people. This is a wonderful bill, because we know that this disease affects all the system in the human body, and can create also other diseases, cardiovascular disease, neurologic disease, and affect the kidney. And I think this is a very, very important step, and trying to provide the best quality of life to people that we are serving. And I want to thank the Speaker for his support to this bill. And to conclude, let me thank also Rob Newman for his excellent service to New York City Council. I had- I had the privilege to go to him also for assistance, and I thank him for his service and to me and to the city council also. He was a great servant of the city council. What I'm proud to say that he is humble servant because he's my constituent. He, we will miss him, but I will see him in the district. Rob, thank you very much for your outstanding service. With this, I vote aye on all.
Gibson.
Permission to explain?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate, and good afternoon, colleagues. Congratulations to everyone for passing incredibly important legislation today. I want to just shout out a couple of our colleagues in recognizing their incredible efforts in getting legislation passed today. I want to thank our former colleague Elizabeth Crowley for starting the conversation and Councilmember Edonis Rodriguez for making sure that the legislation on today's agenda related to Hart Island is passed. Understanding the population of residents and New Yorkers that are buried on Hart Island, I also want to recognize in addition to those that have died of AIDS, we also have a significant number of veterans who are buried on Hart Island. And many of the veteran organizations have been advocating for this legislation. So I look forward to working with our colleagues in the Parks Department on the implementation to make sure we not only preserve the island, restore dignity, but provide enhanced transportation and access to the island. I want to congratulate all of the healthcare advocates from Health People and Chris Norwood and her team. As someone who's been affected in my family by diabetes, I am prediabetic myself. Certainly, this legislation is going to have a profound impact on raising awareness around diabetes as well as offering more education and awareness and promotion in many of our communities. So I applaud that and also want to recognize Councilmember Raphael Espinal and the legislation related to prevailing wage for building service employees at certain development projects. Thank you for your leadership and to all the thirty-two BJ family, our President Kyle Bragg, and many others who really made sure that we continue to lift up our working New Yorkers and we provide the dignity that they all deserve as well as the services that they provide every single day in our communities. And also want to congratulate Rob Newman on his incredible service here at the city council. May God bless you in your new journey and new chapter of service. We will miss you. And with that, I vote aye on all. And congratulations, Public Advocate.
Thank you.
Joe Nye.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all except seventeen eighty. I will not be supporting the renewal of the hotel tax. Resolutions eleven fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four, our real estate tax system is broken. No matter how you put it, this is a real estate tax increase which will make it harder for renters, homeowners, and businesses to survive and remain as residents in our city. Out of borough residents already face the higher effective rate, and the thirteenth council district has the highest effective tax rate in the entire city. So I vote no on those three resolutions and no on fifteen eighty, nine oh nine, nine oh six pertaining to Hart Island, Potter's Field, for the uncertainty and the future of Hart Island because the bills do not go far enough to assure that those that are buried there and the families that have loved ones buried there will be treated with dignity and respect and assuring that the money that's needed and resources that's needed to maintain that cemetery, to maintain Hart Island, hasn't been streamlined and fully dedicated to the necessity of its requirements. Thank you.
Gordenchik.
Mr. Public Advocate, permission to briefly explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Congratulations to you. I want to congratulate my seatmate Donovan Richards on the Edgemere redevelopment. This is something that literally has been kicking around since before he was born. So congratulations to you, Donovan. I want to echo my colleague Rob Carnegie's remarks. I'm going to vote yes on that property tax package because it does represent a decline in the rate, but we really need to do real property tax reform. The property tax owners, mostly single-family homeowners in the city, are getting clobbered. And the rates continue to go up by about six percent a year. The revenue does anyway, and it has to stop because it's just unsustainable. With that, I vote aye on all with the exception of intro nine oh six, from which I abstain. Thank you.
Holden.
I vote aye on all with the exception of fifteen forty-seven A, fifteen fifty A, fifteen fifty-two B, fifteen fifty-four B, fifteen fifty-six A, seventeen eighty, and pre-considered resos eleven fifty-two, eleven fifty-three, and eleven fifty-four. I vote no. Thank you.
Kalos.
Permission to explain my vote briefly?
Permission granted.
I just want to speak in favor of introduction thirteen twenty-one C and making sure that as the city subsidizes projects, we're not actually making the affordable housing crisis worse by paying people poverty wages. This legislation will make sure that the people who are caring for our buildings in our cities that are receiving subsidies will hopefully be able to afford to live in that subsidized housing, if not market rate housing. That being said, I vote aye on all.
Ku.
I want to congratulate Rob Newman, our legislative director for retirement. And I want to thank him for his wonderful service to our city council. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Kozlowicz. Kozlowicz.
Kasimov Kozlowicz.
Lantzman. Lander.
Request permission to explain?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for your support on intro fifteen forty-seven A, which strengthens the School Diversity Accountability Act. As James Baldwin taught, not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. The work to look honestly on segregation in our schools began in many ways in this council five years ago when we had a ten-hour hearing and out of that passed the School Diversity Accountability Act that has provided us with a lot of data. That data has not been easy to look at, but it has been a platform for organizing. We used it aggressively in District Fifteen to make dramatic changes to our middle schools. And where last year, three of the eleven middle schools were in any way integrated and diverse, because of those changes, this year, eight of the eleven are now genuinely integrated, and we're going to get the other three next year. And that is mostly because of organizing and courage, but it would not have happened without the data that was provided by that act. So I am very glad today that we are strengthening that act, providing some additional data, comparing schools to their school attendance zones and their districts, looking at special programs within schools so that we can tell if a school is internally segregated, even if everybody going in the door is more diverse. And I'm pleased that it's part of the broader package that includes a set of bills from the Chair and the Public Advocate and other members that I believe can give us the data and the courage to move boldly forward so that someday we will not have one of the most segregated school systems in the country. Also proud to be a co-sponsor of thirteen twenty-one C and very glad we're moving forward to make sure there's a living wage for that set of workers who are working in our subsidized affordable housing. I vote aye on all.
Levine.
Permission to explain my vote, Mr. Public Advocate?
Permission granted.
Okay. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting intro thirteen sixty-one today as we seek to force this city to confront the public health crisis of diabetes, a fight in which we have stalled, a disease which has severely disparate impacts on people of color in this city. And we need to force the city to confront this crisis. The bill does that by requiring regular release of data on all aspects of this disease, including the numbers of amputations, and by requiring that a robust plan be developed for us to win this fight. I do want to acknowledge the incredible leaders of Health People for helping make this legislation possible. I'm also pleased that today we'll be passing and thank my colleagues for support of intro five fifty, which would bring fairness and transparency, consistency to the HPD lottery system where the stakes couldn't be higher. On average, we have seventy thousand people applying to major affordable housing projects in this city, and we have got to give them a lottery process which is absolutely beyond reproach. To do that, our bill would require that HPD regularly disclose all policies related to how people qualify for lotteries, how lotteries are conducted, how waiting lists are populated and managed, how the transition to a fully online system will be carried out, and much more. And lastly, I want to thank everyone who made it possible for us today to make history in the way that we treat the most marginalized in society in their moment of death. For generations, we have shamefully, shamefully kept the poor, the indigent, the sick on an island that has been ignored and neglected. And we owe better to these one million New Yorkers and those who every year are continued to be buried on Hart Island. Thank you to the bill sponsors. Thank you to Melinda Hunt, and thank you to Speaker Corey Johnson for making this history possible. And I am pleased to vote aye on all.
Lewis.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Public Advocate, on your success. And Rob Newman, you will be dearly missed. I'm voting aye on all except eleven fifty-two, eleven fifty-three, and eleven fifty-four. A large portion of my district and the ones that surround Council District Forty-five encompass homeowners and small businesses who feel overwhelmed and overburdened and overtaxed. When we're seeking to increase property taxes, we need to implement better measures to inform our homeowners and our small businesses in a timely manner that enables them to financially prepare for the anticipated changes we're requesting while protecting us as, this helps and protects us as members, to be transparent, who seek to support these recommendations. And this helps us to identify resources to ensure that the city can continue to function and provide necessary services. Thank you.
Menchaca.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I want to finish the thank yous for seven twenty. Megan Chen and Jeff Baker, thank you so much for being in the room every time we sat down and reviewed. This is why you have seven twenty C. C is the third version of this bill, and thank you so much for that work. I also want to thank the three members who negotiated the work around the protection, the flood protection, Rivera, Chin, and Powers. I look to them with a lot of envy. I think about Red Hook and the work that we have to do in Red Hook to do some integrated flood protection there. And so I can't wait to learn a little bit more about how we can do that in other parts of the city. And I also want to say thank you to thirty-two BJ for their hard work on the ground, thinking through a very complicated piece of legislation, but also I think is going to be a very comprehensive impact to, to many New Yorkers. And again, a shout out to my brother, Jemani Williams, our public advocate now, and the work that we have to do to ensure that no more people die on our construction sites. We do that every day when we think about them, but this bill is going to help ensure that everyone gets trained. Thank you. I vote aye on all.
Miller.
Permission to explain my vote, please?
Permission granted.
Thank you, sir. I first like to echo the sentiments of the Speaker and condolences to the family of firefighter Cecilia Cox and traffic enforcement Linda Mercer. These young women were tireless public advocates, superheroes that, that the work that they have done will not be forgotten. I'd also like to congratulate Councilmember Espinal for his legislation being passed here on prevailing wage. I think that we have demonstrated here today that our mission to create affordable housing and, and to value, respect, and bring dignity and proper compensation to workers are not mutually exclusive. And by what we are doing here today, we demonstrate that. And I will be, I will vote aye on all except for five six three. I'll be abstaining on that and as a company, resolution eleven fifty-nine, I'll be voting no on eleven fifty-two and eleven fifty-three.
Moya.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I want to take this opportunity to thank our esteemed colleague, Councilmember Espinal, for his leadership to thirty-two BJ members and to the President Kyle Bragg, all the rank and file members that have come out to support this intro thirteen twenty-one C. I'm a firm believer that taxpayer dollars should not be creating poverty wage jobs. We desperately need affordable housing, but by paying workers who maintain these properties less than prevailing wage, we're actually exacerbating the problem. So I thank them for their leadership as this fight continues. I will be voting aye on all with the exceptions of intro seventeen eighty and seven twenty C.
Perkins.
I'm going to vote aye on all. I want to applaud the changes and organizing of our schools and look forward to more of reforms of the lingering segregated schools that have yet to come to an end. In other words, I vote aye on all with that concerns and hopefully taking the forefront in terms of what we do next.
Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I, in my last comments, did not have an opportunity to say some thank yous to everybody who worked on the ESCR land use application alongside of myself and the other two members. I want to thank Chelsea Kelly and those folks in the council land use staff. I want to thank, we had worked very hard pushing this administration to times where they were very difficult conversations to have about getting this plan to a better place, but I do want to thank the Commissioner Guerillo, Jamie Torres Springer, the Parks Department, the Borough President, Manhattan DOT, and others. I also want to thank my staff, Ben Jacobs, Emily Walsh, and Liz Peters for their work on this as well. And I just want to say a thank you to Rob Newman. I don't know if he's still here, but Rob has served this institution in a very great way for, for years, and I've had the opportunity to work alongside of him with someone finish legislation that we will as well get to. With that being said, I'm voting aye on all with the exception of seventeen eighty. Thank you.
Reynoso.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Public Advocate. Congratulations to the Public Advocate, Jemani Williams, for the great work. It wasn't a surprise, but we are grateful that you are the Public Advocate. If there was any position that was better suited for you or the other way around, they would be Public Advocate, and I'm really excited that you'll be doing that without having to run three times in less than like, what is it, six months? So congratulations to you. I do want to say to my colleagues in Manhattan, congratulations to that work. I want to be very clear that Brooklyn would kill for that type of work to be done in our borough. And we're actually very envious of the great work that you guys were able to do and put together to make that happen. In the Brooklyn delegation, we will be doing our part to try to match that and try to be as successful as you are. You set the ground game for it, so I just want to say thank you for being bold, for being strong, and doing something that I think for a long time, we're going to, you're going to be very happy about. So congratulations to you and to my neighbor in the Borough of Brooklyn, Councilmember Raphael Espinal, for the work that he did on three, one three two one C. For too long, we have building service workers in the city of New York that can't afford to live in the buildings where they work. And we, I think we got this a little closer now where that reality can be true. So I want to thank him for the work that he did there and congratulate him for the work that he did there, and I would vote aye on all. Thank you.
Richards.
Just wanted to thank the Speaker for acknowledging the life of Cecilia Cox. You know, sometimes we have heroes amongst us and we don't even know it. But I'm a young man whose parents were best friends with, with her and her husband. And, you know, I have some fond memories of playing in her house and watching a Tyson fight even at one time. And picked up the Daily News this week and did not even know. fight even at one time, and picked up the Daily News this week and did not even know how much history she made in this city. So with that, I dedicate my vote to her. Just had spoke to her about a month ago, but didn't realize how sick she was. So that I dedicate my vote to her, and I vote aye.
Rivera.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
So while ESCR is just the first project of many, the city must complete quickly. We are going to have to clear out the chamber at this time. We are going to clear the chamber at this time. We apologize for all those that are going to have to leave, but for the safety of this body, we are not going to compromise our members. If you do not sit down at this time, we are going to have to clear out the entire chamber. We cannot compromise the safety of this body, and outbursts of that kind do exactly that. Additional outbursts, and we will clear the chamber. We must respect the entire body.
Thank you, Majority Leader. You guys should have stuck to the coffin. That was pretty... That was pretty cool, actually. It was pretty new. Thank you, Councilmember Rivera, for your patience. Up until now, it wasn't that bad. Yeah, this is the most respectful protest I've ever seen.
Thank you.
Up until now.
Thank you, quiet in the chamber. We'll turn it back over to public advocate Jomani Williams, and we will continue with Councilmember Carolina Rivera. Okay. So this is the first project of many, and my colleagues, Councilmember Mark Trager, and as you heard from Councilmember Menchaca, Reynoso, and of course Donovan Richards, we are always talking about how we can bring resiliency projects and more sustainable community development across the five boroughs, and I do hope that we can learn from this project, and it can be a model in many ways. I have to thank a lot of people very, very quickly, including Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney, Nidia Velasquez, Assemblymembers Harvey Epstein and Yulie Nguyen, State Senators Brad Hoyleman and Brian Kavanaugh, and all of our district leaders. I have to thank the community organizations that guided our negotiations. A special, special thanks to my community boards, Community Boards 3 and 6, and Susan Setzer, the district manager, and Megan Joy are here, park users such as Solar One, our local sports teams, especially our Little League coaches, Tony, Danny, and Seth, the Lower East Side Ecology Center, our STI Town tenants, and all the NYCHA residents at Baruch, Reese, Wald, Vladeck, Compost Two, LES Two, LES Three, and Gompers Houses, all of the advocates and the community organizations that have provided needed expertise to this process, including Rebuild All Design, Regional Plant Association, New York League of Conservation Voters, New Yorkers for Parks, the Low East Side Center, and Fab NYC. And I have to thank the Council Land Use Division, Chelsea Kelly, Arthur Ha, Raju Man, Julie Lubin, Amy Levitan, and of course Jason Goldman. And I have to thank my entire staff, particularly my Chief of Staff Pedro Carrillo for shepherding this project through from day one. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I proudly vote aye on these historic land use items.
Rodriguez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
So yes, following of what I was explaining about Hart Island, I would add to add that, you know, as we were talking about the historical power of Hart Island, when the city purchased the island for $75,000 in 1968 from the Hunter family, then today, 150 years after, Hart Island has continued to bury the immigrants and the poorest and the homeless. No wealthy families are buried in that location. Yes, the poorest one. Those people who live in communities such as North Manhattan, they can live in the South Bronx, they can live in Brooklyn and Queens, and other places where New Yorkers make close to 40% of New Yorkers living in poverty. Those New Yorkers apply for financial support to bury their loved ones. However, the city of New York only provide $1,200 of financial assistance to hope to cover the cost of a cemetery and the funeral. So I believe that as we are making this transition on transferring the control of Hart Island from correctional to park, we also need to call the city of New York to lobby a Albany so that we can increase the financial support that we provide to family from $1,200 that we do today, amount of dollars that everyone knows is not enough to cover for the cemetery and the funeral. La persona que enterramos en Hart Island vive en el sur de Bronx, vive en el norte de Manhattan, vive en la zona postal que son de los más pobres, de los hombres y de los inmigrantes. Persona que cuando se le muere un familiar solamente califica para recibir 1,200 dólares por el costo del cementerio y la funeraria. So hoy estamos haciendo justicia transfiriendo el control de Hart Island de de correccional al departamento de parque. With that, I vote aye.
Rose.
I vote aye on all except for 1152, 1153, and 1154.
Rosenthal.
With congratulations to my colleagues, I vote aye on all.
Torres.
Aye on all.
Trager.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Yes, thank you, public advocate. Congratulations to you again on your well-deserved victory. I just want to definitely commend my colleagues, Councilmembers Rivera, Powers, Chin, others who I do think deserve a lot of credit for what they've been able to negotiate. But I just want to point out the mayor's scorecard on this issue when it comes to city capital spending on resiliency in the five boroughs. I represent Coney Island, one of the hardest hit areas, Supersterne Sandy, certainly lower AMI levels than parts of the east side of Manhattan. Here's the scorecard. City capital spending, east side of Manhattan, $1.4 billion; southern Brooklyn, $32 million. This is with knowledge that the Army Corps of Engineers said that Brooklyn and Queens are the most vulnerable boroughs to climate change and storms. So $1 billion over $1 billion to $32 million. We have an inequity problem here. And so, Mr. Mayor, you need to align your resources and your actions with your words and your pledges. Let me just speak about my bills that we're voting on today as well. With the passage of Introduction 564A, we will finally know exactly who qualifies for affordable housing and who does not and why. This bill will help shed light on the demand for affordable housing units in New York City and create transparency for residents who apply to the Affordable Housing Lottery and the number of applicants who sign leases for affordable housing units in the city. My colleagues and I heard from many who are being rejected for unclear reasons than those who are winning the lottery. We'd like to know what is working, what's not working, and to finally answer the question, affordable for who? Additionally, Intro 1554B will require the DOE to report on the demographics of all school staff in all study schools. This will include teachers, leadership staff, powers, counselors, psychologists. We need a culture responsive curricula in our school system. And I just, I want to thank all the staff that helped me on the bill. And last, a public advocate, just a few more seconds. Speaking of schools, we had another school shooting in America today in Santa Clarita, California. I believe at least two students have been shot, killed, five seriously wounded. We have a crisis in this country. This government must pass gun reforms legislation immediately, but I also want to note, we desperately need to hire more social workers and counselors in our schools.
Thank you, Councilmember.
That, to me, is something we must address in the city and across this country, and our prayers, our thoughts are there, but not sufficient in terms of addressing this crisis that we're facing in America. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ulrich.
I vote aye on all with the exception of pre-considered Reso 1152, 1153, 1154, and I'm also voting against 1547A, 1550A, 1552B, 1554B, 1156A, and 1780. And congratulations to our newly re-elected public advocate, Jomani Williams. Congratulations, sir.
Malone.
Mr. Public Advocate, I'd like to officially amend my name to add my middle initial to my last name, so I will henceforth be called Abalone to be at the front of the list for voting. What do you think? Can we do that? Is it possible?
I'm not sure. Talk to the speaker, the Majority Leader.
I was just thinking, it might be a way to go. I would like to vote aye on all with the exception of 1780, Resos 1152, 1153, and 1154. With that, congratulations, and Godspeed to Rob. Thank you.
Van Bremmer.
Aye on all.
Jaeger.
I vote aye on all with the exception of Resolution 1152, 1153, 1154, Intro 1780, 1156. I abstain on Intros 1547, 1550, 1552, 1554, and 909. Thank you.
Combo.
I vote aye on all.
Thanks, everybody, for the patience. All items on today's general order candela are adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, zero on the negative, and zero on the abstentions, with the exception of land use 548 and 549 with a company resos, which was adopted by a vote of 47 in affirmative, zero on the negative, and one abstention, and land use 563 and reso 1159, which was adopted by a vote of 46 in affirmative, one in the negative, one in the abstention, and intro 906A, which was adopted by a vote of 45 in affirmative, two in the negative, and one abstentions, and intro 909B, which was adopted by a vote of 45 in affirmative, two in the negative, and one abstentions, and intro 1156A, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in affirmative, four in the negative, zero abstentions, and intro 1321C, which was adopted by a vote of 47 in affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions, and intro 1547A, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in affirmative, three in the negative, and one abstention, and intro 1550A, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in affirmative, three in the negative, and one abstention, and intro 1552A, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in affirmative, three in the negative, and one abstention, and intro 1544B, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in affirmative, three in the negative, and one abstentions, and intro 1580A, which was adopted by a vote of 46 in affirmative, two in the negative, and zero abstentions, and intro 1780A, which was adopted by a vote of 38 in affirmative, 10 in the negative, zero abstentions, and Resolutions 1152, 1153, which is adopted by a vote of 36 in the affirmative, 12 in the negative, and zero abstentions, and Resolution 1154, which is adopted by a vote of 37 in affirmative, 11 in negative, and zero abstentions, and Intro 720C, which is adopted by a vote of 47 in affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. The revised land use call-ups now are 48 in affirmative and zero in the negative. Introduction and reading of the bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on the agenda.
Resolutions.
Seeing none.
All right, we'll now move into general discussions. So far, we have no council members sign up to speak. I did want to thank the body again for passing my piece of legislation. I did want to say congratulations to Rob Newman and his excellent career. He has helped me pass a number of bills, including the Community Safety Act, which is landmark legislation this body has passed. And just lastly, she thought she was going to get away, but my press secretary, Letitia Thiller-Green's birthday is today, and I wanted to wish her a very happy birthday. She's here today. Thank you very much. And I'll now call the Majority Leader, Combo, to close the meeting today.
Thank you. The stated meeting of November 14, 2019, is hereby adjourned. Thank you.